And welcome to the forum for our city council candidates for the city of Anoka. There are two candidates this evening who will be running for one special election, two-year term. There are three candidates for the two four-year term positions. All candidates that were on the ballot were invited to attend tonight, and they are all present and in front of us. I'm Wes Faulkner. I am a member of the League of Women Voters ABC, Anoka, Blaine, Coon Rapids. I am a former resident of the city of Anoka, and I've been residing across the border in Andover for about 20 years. I cannot vote for any of these candidates this evening. The League of Women Voters works to promote the active and informed participation of citizens in the voting process by conducting candidate forums such as this and by promoting voter registration drives for all eligible voters. The League does not endorse, support, or oppose any political party or candidate, but the League does study issues of local, state, and national importance. The League is open to membership for men, as you can see, and women of ages 16 and older, and we invite you to join the League of Women Voters. Our website is at LWVABCMN.org where you can get more information. We will be starting our candidates this evening first with the term for four years, and then after their form portion is done, we will move to the candidates running for the special two-year term. The candidates in each section tonight will receive three introductory questions which were supplied to them in advance. The responses tonight will be timed by a member of the League of Women Voters. They will first give the candidates a 15-second notice before time is up, and then they will hold up a red stop sign to let you know that your one minute has ended. And after those first three questions, we will turn to our audience questions. If you've watched the Merrill Forum, you may recognize some of those questions tonight. They will also have a one-minute response time. And then finally, we'll invite each of the candidates to make a one-minute closing statement. So let's go to our candidates for the four-year city council seats. Two of these three individuals will be elected in November. The candidates, if I'm looking at them from left to right, are Elizabeth Barnett, Eric Schoquist, and Jeff Weaver. For full disclosure, I have met Mr. Schoquist, and I knew Mr. Weaver's brother in my youth. We'll start with the three introductory questions. First question will be directed to Jeff Weaver to my right here. Describe your background and community involvement.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Weaver. I'm a six-year resident of the city of Anoka. My wife, Robin, is an elementary school teacher at Lincoln Elementary School right here in Anoka. We have two married daughters. I'm a past member of the Anoka Housing and Redevelopment Authority for 11 years. I'm a founding member of the Anoka Heritage Preservation Commission. I'm an Eagle Scout out of Anoka's Troop 204. I'm a current member of the President Council, Northern Starts Council, Boy Scouts of America, and the former district chair of the Three Rivers District Boy Scouts of America. I'm a member of the River Fest Committee. I'm a member of the Christmas Tree Lighting Committee. I'm an Anoka Kiwanis Club member. I'm a board member of the Anoka County Joint Law Enforcement Council. I'm a board member of the Twin Cities Gateway and Visitors Convention Bureau, and I'm a passionate volunteer at Anoka's Waterfall for Warriors.
Thank you. And Eric Schoquist, will you please describe your background and community involvement?
Sure. Well, I just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters. As a little aside, it was one thing that was interesting. I was at one of the Night to Unite parties, and somebody asked, "Where do you find out information on local candidates?" And the list was pretty short. This was one, and the local paper was the other. So I really do appreciate it for you for doing this. I've been in Anoka pretty much all of my life. Just like Jeff, I grew up here, and I was in Boy Scouts at 2:33 over at Zion, got my Eagle Scout over there, played ball, rode my bike, did all that stuff in Anoka, grew up here, graduated from the high school, went to the University of Minnesota, and got a bachelor's degree in political science and urban studies. Been interested in the city since really I was in high school, and I've been part of the park board now for about eight years. My family is very active in the community, whether it's my wife at Lincoln PTO T-ball or me on the park board, my church council, helping with Cub Scouts with my son. We kind of fill all our time with something Anoka, and we never seem to be short of things to do.
Very good. And Elizabeth Barnett, will you describe your background and community involvement?
Absolutely. And again, I'd like to echo the thanks to the League of Women Voters. Just being able to be here to speak and to empower the voters with education on your candidates is excellent, exceptional. A little bit about me, again, my name is Elizabeth Barnett. I am currently on the Anoka City Council. I live with my husband of seven years and our rescue dog, Remy, obviously within the city. I've been honored to serve on the Anoka Police Reserve Unit, and in 2017 was provided the award of Reserve Officer of the Year. I too have a busy schedule. I'm on the member of the Lower Rum River Water Management Organization. I'm an active member at my church at Emmanuel Christian Center. I'm an alumni advisory board member for the University of Wisconsin River Falls, served on the Economic Development Commission Board here within the city of Anoka, and also enjoy volunteering in other programs and activities, anything from the Anoka High School Football to the Eagles Healing Nest and River Fest and other activities throughout the city.
Thank you. We'll start with Eric Schoquist for our second question, which reads, "What are your qualifications and why are you seeking this office?"
Well, first of all, I'm a citizen of Anoka. I've been here and engaged for quite a long time. I know a lot about the city, about how it functions. I've worked with cities in my professional life outside here as well. Kind of first off, my background in my city planning and government as far as college has kind of given me a little bit of an interesting perspective. One of the things I did while I was in school is I studied some of the different older cities and how some of them have fallen prey to really typical suburban development, and it's really just gutted their cities and kind of destroyed their soul. I don't like that for Anoka. I don't want that. I'm not here because I want that. There's a lot of unique things about town that I think, you know, we need to work on protecting, but also we need to, you know, get at before they cause problems. Most of you probably know, but in 2014, my wife and I moved a historic house down the street here on Monroe. We've been working on changing that order from a fourplex into a single-family. It's been a great honor to be able to do that and to provide some, something unique for people to drive by and check out as well.
Thank you. Elizabeth Barnett, what are your qualifications and why are you seeking this office?
Thank you. So my work and experience has been within corporate sales and investments for the past decade, and what that has taught me and provided me as an experience and education is how to properly budget, how to properly negotiate, to manage conflict, and several other qualities that have so far lent themselves very well to the Anoka City Council. And so I will continue with that going forward. And then I have also proven myself as a strong advocate for the Anoka citizens who have reached out since my appointment. And when there's a question or a concern, I can tell you that all of their, their concerns have been addressed expeditiously and have been given a fair amount of attention. I'm seeking this office because I want to ensure that the city's need for safety, maintained streets, well-cleaned parks, reliable utilities are met, and they're met in a fiscally responsible manner.
And thank you. Jeff Weaver, same question to you. What are your qualifications and why are you seeking this office?
The city of Anoka needs a council member that is committed to being fiscally responsible to taxpayers' money. The city of Anoka needs a council member who knows and understands the dynamics of how a historic downtown works and is committed to its protection of its historic character. The city of Anoka needs a council member who understands the housing needs of both single-family homeowners and renters and is committed to responding immediately to the residents who contact you with an issue and staying focused until the issue is resolved to the taxpayers' approval. Anoka needs a council member who is committed to finding new revenue sources through new development, redevelopment, or putting non-tax generating properties back on the tax rolls. And the city of Anoka needs a council member who is not afraid to get outside the box to bring fresh ideas, which will enhance our historic downtown shopping and entertainment district, and it is with these qualifications and knowledge that I'm running for reelection to the Anoka City Council.
Thank you. Elizabeth Barnett, you get the answer first on our third of the introductory questions. What are your short and long-term goals for the city of Anoka?
Absolutely. So continuing to create a strong and safe business atmosphere and neighborhood atmosphere, I think, is incredibly important. I think that that's something that we can impact on the short term. So I would like to aggressively respond to the sources of reoccurring nuisances, crime, and blight within the city, and ensure that we gain compliance with those businesses and neighborhood concerns. I'd also like for long term to maintain and improve our city utilities. That's something that is so exceptional within our city, and we're so blessed to have our electrical, or our electrical resource, that I would like to make sure that we reach the RP3 status, which would increase our reliability, our safety, and our efficiency. And then as, as Schoquist had mentioned, Anoka needs to continue to ensure that we are real and classic, and we don't want to deviate far from that.
Good. Jeff Weaver, same question to you. What are your short and long-term goals for the city of Anoka?
One of my goals that has been my number-one goal for all the years that I've been on the councils is to start off with a 0% levy increase, and that sends the message to staff that you better come back with a fiscally responsible budget that the council's going to approve. We had six years during the economic downturn where we did have a zero or a negative levy increase, and I believe this year we're going to have one that's under 3%. What's fascinating about that is now, the average home is now paying less real estate tax today to the city of Anoka than they were in 2008. Another one of my goals is reducing the amount of rental in the city by converting non-owner single-family homes back to owner-occupied housing. HRA is working on a program right now that will facilitate that. Keeping our electric rates to our residents lower than our competitors is extremely important to me. And another goal is making sure we keep our SRP assessments below 25% and keeping our SSIP assessments at zero.
Thank you. And Eric Schoquist, what are your short and long-term goals for the city of Anoka?
Well, short term for me is just to continue promoting the city, encouraging investment, events, activities, things like that. But as Councilmember Barnett said, I think we need to be aggressive on addressing some of the problems with crime and with blight when they come up. You know, it just takes one house in a whole neighborhood to really kind of mess things up, and, you know, to keep our neighborhood strong and safe, we need to be aggressive when those things happen. But when we do this, this brings private investment, whether it's young families, businesses, things like that in town. But we all, and that helps us reinvest in Anoka. We need to make sure we have resources to do some of these things. We are an old city, and we really need to be actively engaged in bringing in positive development into some of these areas that have been purchased by the city and cleared. You know, we need to go out there and bring some of this stuff in, because when we get those and we get the revenue off of those, we can continue to do things that are fun and exciting, like the River Walk along the Rum River or other events and things that make people want to come, and it just creates a cycle where there's more investment, more energy.
Very good. So now we move to the audience questions, and the first one is right to the heart of downtown here. Jeff Weaver, this will go to you first. Should the city council consider mandating downtown businesses to be open a required number of hours every week?
I think that's, you know, when you're an entrepreneur, you have a plan, you have a business plan, you have a, a, a method that works for you. We, many years ago, had occasional shops that were open Thursdays and Fridays, or Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays, and you've seen that change where now they're more open on Wednesday, Thursdays, and Fridays. Mandating a business to be what the government wants with, with, uh, open hours, I'm not a proponent of that. I like the ability for a business owner to be able to do what they think is going to make them successful.
Okay, thank you. Eric Schoquist, again, mandating downtown businesses to be open a required number of hours each week.
First of all, I don't even think that's legal, but, you know, in a fantasy world, if we could do such a thing, I don't think that that's right either. You know, every business is unique. Now, we don't want our downtown to be dead, and if you're a business, what's going to motivate you? Well, it's going to be to be successful and to make money. And the main thing that we can do as a city to encourage that type of thing is to have residents and visitors and everybody come down there to be able to shop, to be able to, you know, go to those businesses. As a city, that's what I think our role is. We need to be able to encourage those types of activities so that when we have 2,000 people down here, or 10,000, or whatever was at the food truck festival, the one place that, you know, is not open, everybody can kind of give them a little bit of guff and say, "Hey, well, why weren't you open? Why didn't you want to make, you know, an extra $1,000 today?" Those are the things that we should be able to do as a city. We don't need to strong our many businesses.
Thank you. And Elizabeth Barnett, mandating businesses to be open required number of hours?
I too agree with, with both of the responses. I don't believe it is legal, and I don't believe that mandating a business in any sort of way or putting additional parameters on a entrepreneur is something that would cause success. Again, you're open the hours that you're open because it works for you, and as a business owner, you're an opportunist. You're not going to be open the hours that, that don't bring you sales, and you're going to make sure that you're open during the peak times. So we have an amazing downtown group, ABLA, who drives these sales, who works with individuals, who draws extra attention at different points throughout the year with street sidewalk sales, and oftentimes you'll see them actually working in conjunction with, say, the food truck festival or Outdoor River Fest. And I think that's what's important, is that we're making sure that as we're planning things as a city, we're including those shops and businesses, and we're focusing on keeping the downtown shops and businesses full.
Thank you. Eric Schoquist, we'll start the next question with you. Do you think our Main Street is healthy and successful? Whether you answer yes or no, how would you address the empty buildings or storefronts in Anoka?
Well, I'm not super old, but I do remember a time when I was younger where everything has transitioned from grocery stores and office supply to kind of a time where things were pretty tough, and now it seems like there's, aren't a lot of empty storefronts and businesses there. To me, it's great. It has made a transition from your traditional downtown to more of a specialty place, but, you know, it, we are, I guess, what we are and what we've become, and it's starting to be more and more successful, and we've become a destination. And as, you know, Councilmember Weaver said, those, those weekend hours have expanded to Wednesdays and things like that, and there are some unique things that people can come down to, you know? I can't go down the street when I forget to buy potatoes anymore to go to the co-op and get an extra pack, but I can go bring the kids, and we can go get ice cream, or we can go visit the dam, or we can go have a bite to eat at a restaurant. So, you know, we have to accept what we've become, and we need to nurture that. And there's ways that we, as a city, can kind of try to do some other things and bring certain unique things we want in, but for the most part, I think we're being very successful.
Thank you. Elizabeth Barnett, Main Street, healthy and successful, and what about empty buildings and storefronts?
Sure. So I think that our downtown is in a really unique position at this point, where we're seeing in the marketplace as a whole, large shopping malls, large retailers, for example, Kmart, Sears, Toys R Us, they're leaving these giant vacant buildings within the cities, and we can even see that just down the road in Coon Rapids where there's a lot of transition happening. That is something where Anoka can win. We are a downtown destination because of the unique product offerings, the unique businesses, and sure, there will be a transition in and out, and, and I think that that's kind of unique, and it's kind of fun. It's almost like a Trader Joe's. You go there and, because you know there's going to be new products, new specials, but what we need to do, I believe, as a city council and as a city to support that, is to have those conversations with the downtown to break down any parameters for success. If there's something out there that they need assistance with or aid with, and we can step in and give them some guidance or help them in any way, that's where I think that we can be of benefit. And I also believe that as we move forward into an internet era where Amazon is ruling the world in a sense, we're going to see more of that focus come and shift to downtown and shop-ertainment or shopping-entertainment. So, you know, if it's more of a digital, if it's having coffee with the experience, if it's being able to order up your clothes before you even get to the shop, I think we have a lot of great opportunities within our downtown.
Thank you. And Jeff Weaver, same question. Main Street, healthy and successful, yes or no? How about empty buildings and storefronts?
Well, in the name of transparency, I am owner of some of those empty storefronts in downtown Anoka, and there's a reason why they're empty. We've had businesses that are successful, that have moved on and bought other buildings to expand their business, and some of those empty storefronts are left empty by design so you get a tenant or somebody that's interested in opening a business that's going to enhance and, and help and have that trickle-down effect on the other businesses that are there. If you put in a business that doesn't blend the uniqueness and the quirkiness that's downtown, it doesn't do any, to enhance that viability of everybody else. And there's, you have a very strong ABLA, which is the Anoka Business Owners Association. You've got a strong Discover Anoka, and you've got a very strong chamber. Anoka's downtown Main Street is one that everyone, other, every other community desires that they would have. We are very blessed.
Thank you. New question, Elizabeth Barnett, first up on this one. Should Anoka join other Twin City communities in acting, enacting a lighting ordinance restriction for residential lighting to cut down on lighting pollution?
Yeah, so that's a great question, and I think the city of Anoka has done an exceptional job already to not only aesthetically have some really beautiful light poles, but to get ahead of this in terms of what is an obstruction of light or an intrusion of light. I know that they're, they have intentionality when they put them in to create hoods or to create barriers between, say, the homeowner's windows or doors and, and their property. So adequately lighting the space, but at the same time not being an intrusion. In terms of joining other partners in a light ordinance, I always hesitate entering into anything or agreeing to anything without the full knowledge behind it of what that looks like, but I think in terms of light ordinances, this is something that we should be able to, as Anoka, handle within our own city and address on a case-by-case basis. Say, if it's a neighbor whose light turns on too quickly or is too bright or, or intruding, I believe that we can just have that conversation as mature adults.
Very good. Thank you. Jeff Weaver, a lighting ordinance that may have some restriction on residential light pollution?
That's a great question, because I heard it yesterday as I was out on the street with a neighbor who got a new street light with the Main Street project in it, and we're finding this being challenging with the transition from sodium bulbs and incandescent bulbs to more LED bulbs that are very bright. And the lumens, I don't know if they have that quite packaged to be user-friendly. You always hear that, some of these light, bright LED lights, they can mow their grass and mill the night. And our staff, at least when it comes to the streetlights, are able to put a shade on it to stop the direct intrusion into the people's homes. That's, that's one thing that's possible. I know we had a long conversation about streetlights and the lumen factor. I think that discussion will continue as technology changes.
Thank you. And Eric Schoquist, a lighting ordinance, something that would be restricting residential light pollution?
Well, again, I haven't, I haven't read the ordinance specifically. That's a pretty broad brush, but, you know, I have heard certain things, whether it's like what Jeff Weaver said here with the city lights, you know, we've changed a lot of our styles over, but the change over to LED has had a pretty big effect, and I don't know if I'd say, other than the, the utility bill, if anybody really has liked that effect. I haven't talked to too many that have, but, you know, whether this ordinance has anything to do with the city's actual role with street lighting, or it has to do with the neighbor putting a big floodlight that turns on three times and lights up your yard, you know, that's a different story. I don't, I, I think it's maybe not our role to enact some large thing, but I obviously think that if it's something that's intruding and causing problems in a neighborhood, you know, whether it's noise or whether it's a bright light shining through, I mean, there can be some modest restrictions, and there's, just like we do with any other code enforcement thing, but short of knowing what's specifically in this ordinance, I, I again hesitate to kind of just sign right on to what everybody else has right now.
All right. Well, we'll start the next question with Jeff Weaver. Gets more into dynamics of being on the council. What is your style of leadership? How would you resolve issues when council members disagree?
You know, that's been the beauty of, of the council members. I can go right back to when Bjorn was on the council. We had, we had great discussions. We had disagreements. A lot of times, we vote unanimously, but I think it's very important that if you have a disagreement, you still got to be able to agree to disagree. That's incredibly important. And if you're taking that angst or that no vote and you let it, that pent-up energy drive an agenda, I think you're going to get in trouble. We all need to be able to have a healthy conversation. You know, I, I know we had a boat lately on, on some townhomes, and the three of us that are up here that are on the council all voted no, but it still passed because of the dynamics of the way the council was before the resignation of Carl. And so it's, 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 it's a, it's a project that's moving forward, and I don't think anybody up here would have supported it the way it is today.
Thank you. Eric Schoquist, style of leadership? How do you resolve issues of disagreement?
Well, one thing that I always, I always seems to go back to is just being open and honest and being truthful with each other, because, you know, that's, that's the best way to solve issues, and, you know, we, right, wrong, or indifferent, the way our government's set up, and we're your representatives, and we're here to debate and discuss these things and come to some agreement and move on. So I think, I think having that dialogue and being open, and if, you know, meetings take a little extra longer because of that, so be it. But I think it's important for all those viewpoints to get out there. The other thing, depending on certain issues, it's, I think it's important to lead by example. You know, I've talked about, talked about not only historic preservation, but maintaining different neighborhoods and houses and things like that as far as, you know, our neighborhoods, and, you know, that's something, I try to practice what I preach, whether it was, you know, fixing up a house, or I don't want to put people in a position where I wouldn't be. I wouldn't want to be forced to keep my business open long hours. I wouldn't be forced, didn't want to be forced to regulate all my lighting on, on my property as well. So kind of understanding what your role is and how you affect the citizens is important.
And then Elizabeth Barnett, style of leadership, resolving issues of disagreement?
Absolutely. So the quote that I can think of right off the bat is, "It's not personal, it's business." And I oftentimes will lead my life in that manner. It's, it's us as the city council. Your responsibility is to be the voice box for the citizens. It's not to always say exactly where you stand as a council member. I may disagree, but if my community members come to me and they say, "Absolutely not, we can't have that," I have the responsibility to be the voice box for that. So oftentimes, too, we come and we, we have a lot of passion and a lot of fire, and I think what's great about that is that we do have that, and we are able to express that because we are passionate, and it's because we love the city of Anoka and we want what's best. And so I think that that passion is, is amazing asset, and I've seen it within our council working now and within other residents that I've spoken with. And how I usually handle these types of, of concerns are with facts and examples. I really like to make sure that we are looking at cases within other cities and, and just going back to the actual facts.
Good. We'll be starting with Eric Schoquist on next one. Going to take three questions that were actually done in the Merrill Forum, kind of combine them around the area of the housing. So we have a question about the 48% of the city's housing stock is rental. There has been a moratorium on multi-unit rental properties. Should that be extended? You might want to take that part. Do you want to go for something on halting the trend of the accelerated destruction of older homes? Or do you want to take something along the lines of, "What would you change in the zoning code?" And you can kind of go for any part of those three as we're getting closer to the end of our forum. Eric, you start off.
All right. Well, that's a full bag here.
It is.
Well, I'll try to do as much of it as I can here. One of the things that I think's important, our zoning code drives what development happens. And, you know, we have a lower-density community that years ago was zoned to higher density, and that's slowly been changing, and, and I think it's important that we have lower density in the areas that we have it, because there are a lot of high-density apartments and things that have gone in in the '60s and '70s that have been around for a long time that I think most of us probably aren't big fans of nowadays. And that leads to the historic preservation of, of some of the houses that we have. I might get a little guff for this, but, you know, the city's kind of been one of the biggest, biggest problems when it comes to taking some of this stuff out over the years. I think we need to dial that back a little bit. We need to focus We need to focus in certain areas, and we need to stick with the zoning we have because it's really easy to change that zoning when a developer, when something comes along, we put a planned unit development in and that specific half a block has a specific zoning. Um, but we need to be consistent and stick with the plan, and I think in the long run we'll be successful.
Elizabeth Barnett, we threw a grab bag of different housing things at you there, so go ahead and take whatever works for you, whether you want to extend the moratorium on, uh, multi-unit rental, if you are, want to address the accelerated destruction of older homes, or talk about zoning code changes.
Great. Uh, I'd like to touch on the older homes. Um, we do have a couple of programs out there through the HRA in which you're able to, you know, take a, a home and transition it actually into, from a, a multifamily into a single family. We also have several programs available if you're looking to make improvements on your home and are looking for maybe some extra aid in terms of finances. Um, when I walk around and I've been talking to the citizens of Anoka, um, and just my experiences here, there was a home that was on its absolute last leg, and I didn't know, I believe it was condemned. I don't even believe that there was any chance of it coming back. It was placed on the market. We had an interested buyer. They came in, they talked, they worked with the HRA, and they have remodeled it to this beautiful home. And that's what I think individuals outside the city of Anoka want to do. They want to come in, they love our historic home, they love Anoka, they love our feel, and they're going to invest in these properties, young families who have energy, money, and sweat equity to put into them. Um, I think that through that, we're able to, uh, refresh.
Thank you. And Jeff Weaver, again, we give you kind of your choice on where you want to go with these three related to housing type of issues.
You know, that was a great question. It was about six years ago that we look, look comprehensively at the entire community and downzoned a lot of it to an R1. And even downzoned some of the areas that were R4 into an, an R1. And that's, I think slowed a lot of the, uh, conversion of buying older homes and putting in the fourplexes and eightplexes. That was just a start. Just recently, we've done a rental density cap for single family, uh, non-owner occupied homes, which is going to slow down hopefully that part of the puzzle. And I, uh, I know staff is working on other, uh, parts of our ordinance, which I think you'll see a density, a reduction in the R3 and R4 zoning that would, uh, probably eliminate the speculation of building bigger homes or, uh, putting parcels together to create a, a larger density. Um, that hopefully will, will also do that. The HRA has also put a, a program in place to, uh, return non-owner occupied properties back to owner occupied properties.
Thank you. So this will be our last audience question before your closing statements. Elizabeth Barnett, you get the question first. Uh, kind of ties a little bit in with the last question that we just put together. What's most important to the city of Anoka right now? Is it building new, or is it rehabbing, expanding, or utilizing our existing footprints, to use a word that, uh, Phil Rice used earlier this evening?
Sure, that's a great question. Uh, the city of Anoka has essentially been built up and developed to about our maximum. We have not much space left over. Um, so I would absolutely have to say that it is going back, rehabbing, and reassessing the needs of our current structures.
Good. Um, Jeff Weaver, uh, building new, rehabbing, reutilizing, expanding the existing that we have?
You know, I think it's going to be kind of a combination of all of the above. Um, I think 319 Monroe was a great example of a property that could have been taken down very easily, and you had an investor that had a vision and a, and a passion to, uh, take on a real challenge, and they've taken this property, and it's going to turn back from a, a real disaster. Everybody knew about it, and it's going to turn into a wonderful owner occupied property. You take, um, other areas that we have, when you talk about affordability for new families to relocate to Anoka, Anoka has wonderful, uh, opportunities out there for first time home buyers. But you need to be able to have the ability, if you want these young families to grow and stay in Anoka and attend our schools and shop in our towns, you got to be able to move up the ladder to different housing types. And, and I think we addressed that when we did Rummer Brashores. That's allowed people that want to stay in town, want to have their kids stay in the school district, but have a little bit nicer home, have that opportunity. We need that, uh, and I could go on and on and on.
Well, we'll let Eric Skoquist pick up from there, and Eric, again.
You finish, please.
Most important city of Anoka, building new, rehabbing, expanding, reutilizing?
Well, I, I agree, both are important, but you know, because we're so developed, rehabbing is obviously the most important part. Um, you know, both of these folks up here mentioned 319 Monroe Street, kitty, kind of kitty corner for me. Um, that is a, a property that was, was tough in the neighborhood and, and needed some work, but it was problem property because of who was in it. It was a problem because of what they were doing to the place, had, you know, all sorts of issues. Um, kudos to the police department and code enforcement for being involved and, and getting in there and taking care of that problem and working out a deal with the absentee owner of that property to buy it. Um, but that was slated to get demolished because the city was involved with it. And for not the, uh, the lobbying of various people in the neighborhood, that would have been just another vacant lot on the corner. I think those are the things that, you know, people want to move into town. I've had friends all over the place that have decided to come back to Anoka because they want to be here. They want to be in a place with character and with history and with a soul. And if we take these things out and we don't rehab them, um, we're just going to be like another city around us, so. No offense to Andover, sorry, I know you live there, but different story, right?
Very good. Well, we're going to close with the closing statements. Uh, back to the original order, Jeff Weaver, you are up next.
Wonderful. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting together this forum to let candidates express their thoughts and opinion. Anoka has a long tradition of keeping its tax burden to the taxpayers who both reside and do business in Anoka at a, at an affordable rate, even while providing the outstanding services we all cherish, admire, and expect. Strong cohesive neighborhoods are the backbone of great communities. Protecting the integrity of our single family neighborhoods by being able to make tough decisions when it comes to zoning and other related housing issues will always be a top priority. Preserving Anoka's history and traditions are constant challenges, which will need a strong city council member who can think outside the box. I'm always up to that challenge, and I take great pride in how the city saved cottages two, three, four, and the auditorium at the historic state hospital campus from the wrecking ball. Being a public servant is a privilege, a privilege I have taken very seriously. Come the November election, I would be honored to earn your vote. My name is Jeff Weaver. I'm running for reelection to the Anoka City Council, and I approve this message.
Eric Skoquist, your opportunity.
Well, thank you again to the league. Um, I'll just kind of touch on some of the main things. You know, the reason I am in Anoka and the reason I've chosen to stay in Anoka is because I love the wonderful history, I love the vibrant downtown, I love the neighborhoods, whether they're the one I live in, whether it's the, all the ones I get to visit while I'm out campaigning, talking with folks, and being on the park board. Um, you know, I've seen all the wonderful parks and trails and the rivers and great natural areas that we have. And we need to be able to invest in those. Some of those have been set a little bit by the wayside for a while, and it's important for us to have the resources to do those types of things and to be smart with our money. And, you know, like everybody, we need to prioritize what we do with that. Um, I have been very fortunate to grow up here, and I would be honored to be your, your next council member. Feel free to get ahold of me if you have any questions. And, uh, again, League of Women Voters, I can't thank you enough for what you do because without you, there really wouldn't be much information out there on any of us.
Thank you. And Elizabeth Barnett, you get to close us this evening with your statement.
Wonderful. Well, again, let me just echo the thanks to the League of Women Voters and to each and every one of you for coming out this evening. And for those watching online and on television, uh, there's something special about knowing that there's a group of individuals who are committed to educating themselves and making strategic vote during the November election. Uh, so again, just an honor to be here and, uh, an honor to be speaking with these two individuals as well. I want to tell you that, uh, I, you have my full commitment to continue to work aggressively to serve the city of Anoka. Um, it's been a joy for me, even though it's been a short period of time to serve with this council, and I would love nothing more than to continue to represent you moving forward.
Well, we all want to thank the three of you as the candidates for speaking to the voters of Anoka this evening about issues that are important to this city and for taking the time to run for public office. Our democracy depends on citizen involvement. Thank you again to the audience for the excellent questions that came in, specific for discussing with each of you this evening. Again, please let's show these three candidates our appreciation. And then we're going to transition right away into doing our contest for the city council special election. This again is for the two-year term, which is filling the vacancy that had been created earlier. And our candidates for the two-year term this evening are Brian West and Virginia Loudon. And for full disclosure, I actually am a proud tornado who went to school with Mr. West's brother many a year ago. So we're going to start off with our three introductory questions, which again, they have been supplied with. Uh, we will begin with, uh, Virginia for the first question. Please describe your background and community involvement.
Uh, thank you, everybody, for coming and the League of Women Voters. I am very excited to be here. Um, I've been a resident of Anoka for a little over 15 years now, um, raising five amazing kids with my husband. Um, when we moved here, I just fell in love with the town and decided I wouldn't leave. So here we are. Um, I work at a local car dealership, uh, in accounting, so I take care of books. Um, a lot of my training was HR heavy, um, so I'm good with people and tricky situations. Uh, small business owner, uh, in Anoka. I also am founding president of a nonprofit I started a little over four years ago based in Anoka. Um, the secretary of the PTO board at my daughter's elementary school right up the road. Um, I volunteer whenever I can. Um, if there's a project that needs to be done, I'm very involved and very passionate about, um, there's no stopping me. That is, oh, gosh, what else? Nothing. No.
Well, and we'll, we'll move to Brian West to describe your background and community involvement.
Well, thank you, Wes, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. My wife Haley and I have raised our two kids and lived in Anoka for most of our lives, and all four of us graduated from Anoka High School. I've been involved in the city of Anoka since 1992 when I was appointed to the Anoka Public Library Board. I then ran for city council in 1994 and again in 1998, winning both times. I served six years on the city council at that time. I was appointed back to the city council in 2016 when council member Steve Schmidt had to resign. I've been a member of the Anoka Technical College Foundation Board. I've been a member of the Anoka Anti-Crime Commission, uh, and Youth First Board. Uh, I served six years in the Army National Guard. I'm a member of the Anoka American Legion, and my wife and I attend Eagle Brook Church here in Anoka.
Thank you. And Brian, we're going to continue with you for the second question. What are your qualifications and why are you seeking this office?
Thank you. I'm seeking this office because recently, uh, more than just recently, but recently I was on Mill Avenue, and that is just, uh, east of Fourth Avenue. And I saw six little girls on their bicycles. And I thought to myself, this is exactly how it was when I grew up on Monroe Street. There were a lot of kids in town. And frankly, when I was on council in the nineties, there weren't a lot of kids in town that were riding their bicycles, uh, on the streets. We have seen an influx of children in our community, and that is a positive for this community. Um, I enjoy seeing and being involved in the development and redevelopment of this community. And I want to provide so much opportunity for the people that live and come here, like I've experienced over my 54 years of life.
And Virginia Loudon, uh, please, would you describe what your qualifications are and why you are seeking this office?
Qualifications, um, I've been in an office setting for, um, over 20 years now, so I have a lot of experience with bookkeeping and dealing with people and customers on a regular basis. Um, I apologize, I am super nervous. I'm just going to say that out loud right now. I've never done this before. Okay. Um, I'm not afraid of a project. Anybody who knows me, if you need something done, I'm the one you go to. Um, I found myself saying a lot recently. I'll bring up a project to my husband that I'm going to do, or my friend that I'm going to do, and they look at me like, really? You're going to do that? And I'm like, well, somebody's got to do it. And I guess I just kind of figured out recently that that's how I live my life. And following politics lately, uh, everybody does. Basically, I can't affect change in the world, and I can't affect change nationally, but what I do have time for in my life is to start at the city government level. So this is where I start.
Thank you. Um, Virginia, you'll get the third question first opportunity. What are your short and long-term goals for the city of Anoka?
My first short-term goal will be to learn as much as possible. I'm going to dive in, and I'm willing to get dirty, and I want to learn everything and everything that there is to know because that's how, that's how I work. Um, secondly would be to continue, um, some of the amazing things that city council already does. You know, trying to keep the levees down, trying to get the Highway 10 project up, trying to get, you know, worn out properties up. All of that stuff is great. Um, but at the same time, I want to find new ways to bring more people here, not only to live, but to spend their money and spend their time and tell their friends about, and then give them a reason to stay or keep coming back.
And Brian West, your short and long-term goals for the city of Anoka?
My short-term, uh, first short-term goal really is to keep the levy at a reasonable, reasonable, uh, level. And we've done that over the last two years, and we're going to do that again this year because I believe that if we can keep our taxpayers in a healthy state and not overburden them from the city's aspect, they're going to, we're going to have a healthy community. Secondly, uh, my short-term goal is always rental licensing enforcement and our public safety. We need to uphold our public safety and the people that go out and protect us, not only the fire department, or I'm sorry, not only the police department, but also the fire department. My long-term goals for the community, though, are really housing. I'm passionate about that. The redevelopment of properties that need development and the development of new properties when it's feasible.
Good, thank you. Uh, Brian, you're going to get the first audience question, and believe it or not, there's actually a couple that hadn't been asked yet this evening, and I will give you the first one. How do you feel about downtown traffic, especially Main and Ferry?
I don't like it, but I don't think anybody in Anoka likes it. And simply put, it's not Anokans that are causing the problem. It's the development that we've seen, uh, throughout this county over the last 30 years. I wish there was an easy solution to that. Uh, for instance, on Saturday, I was coming across the bridge from Champlin, and there was a pedestrian that was going to cross Ferry Street at the Walk Bridge. They pushed the button and the light turned yellow, and then it turned red, and I had to stop, and I watched the truck behind me come up real close, and I know that there are problems with that. So we have to take an efficient look, and we have to really work with the county and the state, and we're doing that, to look at how can we maximize the efficiency of our traffic and the flow of our traffic in our community, especially at Main and Ferry.
And Virginia, your turn. Uh, what do you think about downtown traffic, especially at Main and Ferry?
Well, lately, we all know, it's not fun. Oh, it's not. I'm out of my microphone. Um, I've lived in Anoka for 15 years. A lot has changed since then, so far for the better. Um, times like right now, when there's lots of construction on the Champlin side, it's affecting us a lot, and it's not fun for anybody. Um, I know that, you know, we have our own plans in Anoka to fix our own problems that are coming up in the next four years, I believe, to get started, the Highway 10 project and the possible bridge over the train tracks and stuff like that. Um, that is also going to be not fun to live through, but it's necessary, and once it's all said and done, um, it'll be a whole new ballgame, although by then we'll probably have something else that we don't like going on somewhere else. Um, I don't know, I think the progress we're making is good. I think it's going to take some time, and we all just kind of have to fight through it.
Virginia Loudon, first, uh, opportunity on the next question, which, uh, is the Highway 10 solution, are there other projects besides the funds that have already been approved for the Thurston and Fair Oaks interchanges that you would like to see the city of Anoka to focus on?
I'm going to say no. Um, I think it's important that we do it. Um, I live on the other side of the train track, so it's going to affect me a lot. Um, the only thing I will say is I, because I live on the other side of the tracks, The only thing I will say is I'm, because I live on the other side of the tracks, I think it would be great if, like, as a city and as a community, we could maybe give the people that live in the community ideas on how they can deal with it, other routes to take or times to travel, just to help everybody reroute themselves during the process so it goes smoother.
Okay. And Brian West, same to you. Other than the Thurston and Fair Oaks interchanges, other projects that you would like the city of Anoka to focus on?
Well, I don't want to have to focus on that project, but we have to. I mean, it's just inevitable. All of us have seen the backups that happen on Highway 10. But we also see the backups that happen on Highway 47 when a train comes through by Alter or by the school district building, and we have to bring that to attention. We have to be able to look at Ferry Street, which that goes by the fairgrounds and used to be a city street, is now a freeway. There's about 85,000 cars that come on Ferry Street, and it impacts the Mineral Pond neighborhood, and it impacts Dunham Oaks, and that's challenging. So we are forced, but we have such a great staff that that staff has worked with the county, has worked with MinDOT to put plans in place, and there's going to be some pain with those plans, but we are working, looking at how we can alleviate those congestion points that we have in this community.
So next question goes to Brian West. Moving off of the streets to the sidewalks, do you have a preferred type of maintenance material? They're asking, do you prefer patching concrete sidewalks or using blacktop?
Well, sidewalks are always a tenuous thing for a city council person because some people love them, some people don't like them. I want to say this first and foremost. Our staff in the winter does a tremendous job of clearing the sidewalks so we, as pedestrians, can use them and access them in front of our homes, in front of our businesses, et cetera. I would never, though, want to diminish what we have. If we have a concrete sidewalk, I would want to replace that with concrete because that gives it the best lifeline. Our staff knows how to pour concrete. They know how to work concrete in an area like we live in where there's freezing and thine, and you have cracks. You have trees that lift up concrete sidewalks. So you have to have a staff that understands how to work with the materials that they have and the sidewalks that are at hand.
And Virginia Loudon, to you, the same preferred type of maintenance for sidewalks, concrete, blacktop?
I agree. I think whatever it's made of, if it's at all possible, should be fixed with the same. If we're trying to, you know, continue being aesthetically pleasing and fixing up eyesores, we don't need to be walking down a cement sidewalk with chunks of blacktop everywhere.
So, little different then. Now, we'll go to a question we asked in the last part of the forum, which is sort of working in the council. What is your style of leadership, and how would you resolve issues if the council members disagree? And Virginia, you start off on that one.
My style, I listen. I'm a very good listener. I like to hear all of the sides before I make a decision. Being in human resources before, I've been in many situations where you have clashing personalities or, you know, disagreements over big things or trivial things, and you just have to know how to work through it, you know, brainstorm ideas. How can we come to a solution that works for everybody? And honest to goodness, you know, sometimes we might not agree, and that has to be okay as well.
Okay. And Brian West, same to you. Your style of leadership, how do you work with resolving issues where council members would disagree?
Yes, working with council members that disagree. Well, it's difficult on topics that you find may be disagreeable. You can only call one other council member by law. You can't call the council as a whole. The only time you can talk about those topics is when you're at a public meeting, and it's usually on the first and third Monday of the month. So I work with staff. I work with staff to get the best insight I can on the topic that is at hand or on the agenda that I think is going to be controversial. I like to listen to the other council members and find out how they feel about it, how they look at it, but I pretty much know how I'm going to vote when I come into a council meeting. And a good example of that was the Second and Monroe Townhome Project. I did not like it, and I voted no for it. And the other council members, excluding one other, voted for it, and it passed on a three-to-two vote.
Okay. Next question will go to Brian West first. We heard this earlier this evening. Should Anoka join other Twin Cities communities in enacting a lighting ordinance that would be restricting residential light pollution?
That's an interesting question, one that I haven't given a lot of thought to until tonight, but I will say that the city of Anoka and our electric utility, we are progressive. If you go to Castle Field, it has light shields on it, and I, my back, or my living room window looks out onto Castle Field, and I can see the light standards, but they're shaded. They're shaded specifically to reduce the pollution that we have. Now, if you have a neighbor that has an obstructive light, or in fact, my neighbor has had their lights on all night, all day, all night for the last three days, there's ways that we can, you know, work with those people and get that issue resolved. But I don't think that we should necessarily enter into an ordinance of sorts that says, hey, we have to reduce light pollution with other communities. But the nice thing is, the city already does that. We already are looking at ways that we can reduce the light pollution that's out there today.
And Virginia Loudon, enacting a lighting ordinance that would restrict residential light pollution?
I don't believe we need an ordinance yet. As far as I can tell, the city of Anoka is pretty mindful when putting in new lights. If there are specific lights that are causing a problem, then I would hope that somebody would bring it to the city's attention and get it, you know, looked at and resolved without becoming a big issue. If it is a neighbor issue, again, calling the city, if it's not getting taken care of, you know, bring it to City Council. I think it can be handled on a case-by-case basis. I don't think we need an ordinance.
Okay. Virginia, we'll start off, this will be that smorgasbord question on housing, and I'll give you the three, and you can tackle whichever part of it you want to go for. Forty-eight percent of the city's housing stock is rental. There is a current moratorium on multi-unit rental properties. Should that be extended? Would you prefer to discuss changes in the zoning code and what might that look like? Or do you want to tackle the accelerated destruction of older homes? What could be done to halt that trend?
I think I'll go with the rental part.
All right.
Like they were saying before, is that we only have so much available land to build on in Anoka, and that needs to be treated precious because once it's gone, it's going to be what it is. We do have a high rental population, and I believe that part of growing Anoka with what little space we have is to turn some of the rental properties into owner-occupied. That will help people feel more invested in the community, more kids attending our schools regularly. My children attend a local elementary, and over 60% of our students are on free or reduced lunch because we have so much rental property. I think having more owner-based property will bring a little bit more stability even at the school level.
Thank you. And Brian West, that same grab bag, talking perhaps about the rental properties, multi-unit properties, whether to extend a moratorium, changes in the zoning code, or how would you perhaps tackle the accelerated destruction of older homes? How would you halt that trend?
Well, I don't like the idea of tearing down houses just because they're old and you build a new one. I have, though I must admit, built two new homes in the city of Anoka. Fifteen thirteen Third Avenue South, the house burnt. And my wife and I had a vision, mostly my wife had that vision. It was very lovely. We lived there for over four years. We just currently built a house at, I have to look at the new address, 4252 Parkview Lane in Rum River Shores. My wife had a very lovely vision. But I want to say this. My daughter and her husband just bought a house on Cross Street, built in 1941, and my daughter said to me today after they had the inspection, and they soon will be closing on this house, Dad, one of the neatest things about this house, it has a coal chute door. You don't see that anymore. We have to preserve what we have to the best of our ability, and we have to also think into the future, and if there's opportunities to put new houses in where they may have been old ones, that could be a good opportunity also.
Coal chute door, is that like a laundry chute?
I think so, isn't it?
Great. Well, Brian, you get this question. Again, we've heard this in the earlier part of the council forum. Should the city council consider mandating downtown businesses to be open a required number of hours every week?
No, absolutely not. That is not our place. If you run a business, you run a business because you want to own a business and be an entrepreneur. My dad owned a business in, from 1956 to 1962 called Sterling's Menswear, and he went out of business in 1962, but he stayed open a lot of hours. That's just the nature of owning a business. Now, if you've been downtown anytime, really, especially, though, on the weekends, it is a vibrant downtown, and I think the Jackson Street Entertainment Area, which are the restaurants, bring a lot of people into town, and that, and the business owners feed off of that. At our first food truck festival, which we had about an estimated of 10,000 to 20,000 people in town, one of our businesses in town indicated to me they had their best day ever. Business people know what business people want to do, and we should let them do it.
And Virginia Loudon, should the city council consider mandating downtown businesses to be open a required number of hours every week?
No way. We have a lot of small businesses in our town, and they're owned by regular people. I think forcing a business to be open when the city isn't busy and there's not shoppers could be detrimental. No profits, that would eat right away at their profits. Our job would be to find ways to bring in more visitors, more people to live here, more people to spend money. We bring them in, and if it's busy enough, then maybe they will change their hours when they know that people are going to be here to shop.
Very good. This will be the last audience question before your closing statements. Virginia, you will start this one off. You've heard this one before. What's most important to the city of Anoka right now? Building new or rehabbing, expanding, or utilizing our existing footprints?
Rehabbing and utilizing what we already have. We are a historic town. We have a lot of beautiful things that could be brought up to date, or to code, or however you want to say it. We need to save the new properties for the right thing. We shouldn't be in a hurry. We have plenty of work to do with what we already have.
Thank you. And Brian West, what's most important, building new or rehabbing, expanding, utilizing our existing footprints?
Yep, exactly. Well, I explained to you that I built new, but that doesn't mean that's how I think or feel necessarily for everybody. My daughter, as I indicated, has bought a new house, and that house has been completely redone, and that was the charm of it, and the charm of the outside is still there. We don't have that much room, so we have to pay special attention to what we have. We heard a candidate that moved a house from one block down to a block up and has done a fabulous job of rehabbing that house and making it a livable, a single-family home. That's what I think this community has to focus on because that's what we have the most of, and we have programs that are put in place to help people do that. We have to focus on getting new families with those kids on their bikes here in town, but more importantly, we got to get them to stay. So having Rum River Shores, a new community or a new development, is absolutely necessary to this community, too.
Well, Brian West, I invite you now to do your closing statement.
Anoka is a wonderful, wonderful community. I hope that you've seen my passion for this community in the way that I've described the answers today. I can't think of a better place to grow up, raise my family, and live with my family than Anoka, Minnesota. If you go down to the new Anoka Memorial, Veterans Memorial, you'll see Sterling Frank West, a resident of Anoka who went and fought in World War I. You'll see Sterling J. West, a resident of Anoka and my father, who fought in World War II. I can't think of ever moving away from here, but I have, but I always move back. I want Anoka to be a place that I can help be the greatest place that I can think of. I hope that you'll support me in November. I appreciate your help, and I look forward to serving you to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you. And Virginia Loudon, will you close it out with your statement tonight?
Firstly, thank you, everybody, for being here. Don't let my nerves fool you. I'm actually very excited to be here. I knew years ago that someday I would want to run for City Council. We moved here in 2003. I couldn't have told you that then. But after living here and raising my family here, I knew I didn't want to leave, and I thought, oh, when the kids are grown, when they're older, when they're out of school, when they move out, I'll run for City Council. And then I'm looking around my house, and I'm looking at the kids, and I'm involved in the school, and I'm involved in my charity, and I'm doing all these things in the community, and I thought, why am I waiting until my kids are grown and gone and I am much older? This is where I live now, and I want to be involved now. So from the moment I took my daughter down the hall to sign up as a candidate to right now, it has been very enjoyable, and it's been a great learning experience, and it is not over.
Well, we want to thank again both of these candidates. The city of Anoka's been blessed this evening hearing from all of the candidates. You're speaking to the voters of Anoka on issues that are important to the city. You've taken the time to run for office. Our democracy depends on this type of citizen involvement. Thank you again to our audience for their listening. Coming up with yet some more questions that we are able to ask. Once again, will we show our candidates your appreciation this evening? And then I'm going to wrap up with just these comments. Please visit the LWVABCMN.org website or minvotes.org for more election information. Please remember to vote on November 6th or to apply for your absentee ballot at the Secretary of State's website, or come to City Hall, right where we are, beginning September 21st to be able to vote in person. So on behalf of the League of Women Voters, Anoka, Blaine, Coon Rapids area, thank you and good night.